As well as the sheriff's sergeant position request. I think that was everything.
I believe so. I just get in the legal counsel's packet. That was on my job duty today.
Oh, boy.
You got the sergeant?
Yep.
You'd add that on.
So, our first item's 10:00 AM is public comment. And Heather, you and the sheriff's office are up at 10:10 since it's a public hearing. So here we will open that secondary. And we will start with, we had told Beth yesterday she wouldn't have to be present for Oregon Health Authority agreement. And we need to find that again. Mr. Bailey, you reviewed that from public health?
Yes, yes, the amendment two. Yes. These are routine amendments. We get them every year. To my knowledge, all they've ever done is just adjust the amount in question, occasionally extending, and then extending the date of contract end. So, the substantive provisions are, in my experience, never changed.
Okay. So, I'll move to approve agreement number 154118, Second Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority, 2017-19 Intergovernmental Agreement for the Financing of Public Health Services.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve agreement number 154118-2. The agreement has presented any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to bounce down here, Commissioner, because I want to start by 10:10. Fair Board member reservation.
We've already acknowledged that. Give direction to Denise to write a letter of appreciation to the Board of Commissioners, and that Fair Board would be making a recommendation after advertisement or replacement.
Okay. We've got a lot of things where we're going to have people on for a while, so.
You're wanting to fill in between?
Yeah, just for the next five minutes.
For the hearing? I think we go right down to VigilNet, Electronic Home. Pretty simple, I believe.
Okay. Jake?
Yeah, VigilNet, that's the, our TPS and electronic monitoring. Entering into agreement VigilNet to provide us with the services and the hardware and the software to be able to monitor our clients. The GPS, and that's what I'm buying, gives us additional sanction capacity above and beyond our jail and police service.
And I think you said yesterday the legal counsel reviewed this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I'll move to approve the VigilNet Supply and Support Service Agreement as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the VigilNet Supply and Support Service Agreement as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Went right past discussion. I thought we were going to have that discussion about preliminary monitoring of the Commissioner driving from Lakeview to Paisley to find out if there's any dead areas and build a tractor movement. Is it not the time, Jake?
Well, we visit that when we get our hardware.
Okay. Last time we talked, he was going how fast?
Fifty-three.
It was fifty-three?
Sixty-three. No, it was fifty-three.
I was told we thought he was going backwards. He's driving so slow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You already voted.
I know.
But you, the amendment, the motion, you just accept it.
Jake, do you want to try and squeeze in a client with Lake Community Action Services agreement?
Sure, that's an agreement. For Firewood Community Action Services, they cater to disabled and those who meet the criteria for energy assistance. So, by entering into an agreement with them, we will be provided some financial resources for delivering firewood. I believe it's $125 a quart that we will receive, an additional $10 for stacking, an additional $10 if it's within 15 miles of Lakeview or outside of the 15 miles of Lakeview. And our plan is to, if this is approved, to enter into a MOU with Warner Creek to split any monies coming in. Our plan is to split those dollars because of warrant, terror, and there, equipment, chainsaws, and vehicles from hauling wood out to the prison, as well as our warrant and terror from our trailer and fuel in our van.
And as you said yesterday, you didn't solicit with class the payment that that's what Don and?
Yeah, class, wanting to say this is what we will do.
Yeah.
And that's filled out in this agreement to work with DOC, and our payment class is acceptable as that.
Absolutely.
I'll move to approve the contract for services between Climbuth Lake Community Action Service and Lake County Community Corrections as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the contract for services between Climbuth and Lake County Community Action Services and the Lake County Community Corrections Department. Discussion?
I think it's great. I just, as we speak, our talk yesterday is some of the things that can be, go along with this program, you know, make sure people aware that three quarts maximum, all those things. I think it's great that our community and bus go on and classes, and they'll reimburse some of the dollars. That's very.
And we'll have our work group forming. Mr. Hall, John Hall will contact Ms. Turner with the town and get a copy of that, that agreement. So, maybe do a little work while we're also building that.
Just building relationship. Thank you very much, Jake.
Okay. We voted on that.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So now, we're going to go ahead, 10:10 time date on this public hearing/fee ordinance, 52.120, Sheriff's Department. This is the second of two hearings, so the hearing is now open. Heather, you want to, you are the sheriff, want to describe the whole specifics on this?
It's just, House Bill 2618 was passed in June, and it crossed the board. They added to each time of the fees that we charge in the sheriff's office that we will be all on the same page. And so, I handed in the cost difference on them so that you can review, and it has been shown to Mr. Bailey, so.
Yeah, it seemed really straightforward, that it's just the process of the hearing. I don't know that anybody's willing to be here.
Was there any comments last?
No. Mr. Bailey?
No, there's something special about that.
Okay. I'm going to propose we just close the hearing and take action.
Absolutely. It's advertised. It's a second hearing. People have been aware of it. Normally, we leave them open for a while, but I'm on the second hearing pretty quick.
We will close the hearing then at 10:12, and we'll get taking appropriate action.
Okay. As the hearing is closed, and there has been no public comment come in on the proposed fee changes, I will move to accept the fee changes that are, that have come down in the hearing process and have been followed to implement House Bill 2618-P.
I will second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the House Bill 2618-B, new fee schedule as presented through the hearing process. Any other discussion?
Discussion, I believe this is appropriate, and I'm trying to catch chairs, I'm reading past it. This would take effect immediately after we vote. Is there any timeframe, Heather, that you've known or anything?
That this gets adopted, once you?
Once it's adopted?
It's for January 1st, 2016.
For January 1st, okay. So, I guess I probably should amend my motion that this will be implemented effective January 1st, of 2018.
Yeah. And I will second that.
Thank you.
The change. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Do you know if the folks from the DA's office were going to come down on the child abuse?
We told them yesterday we didn't believe we needed to be here.
Okay. Do you want to talk about that?
I.
You're probably more familiar with it. It's pretty straightforward.
Well, we had the full presentation from both Caitlin and Marley yesterday, these dollars coming in in 2017, 2019 INM. There was two scribner errors that are going to be corrected, one of those being the contact name will be changed to the correct name. And on page one, I believe it is, it lists Lake County with a double "Lake," and it says "Lake," "Lake County," that scribner will be corrected. Legal counsel did receive this, we asked him, and he had not commented, so we took that as we have no legal.
Yeah, I rarely have any comment that objects to increase in frame line.
So, with that said, I will move to approve intergovernmental grant agreement, Camming with MDTE, Lake County, and the number here is DAVAP-00041.
I will second that. It's been moved and segmented to approve the Camming grant as presented, with the necessary identification of the numbers and grant agreement numbers and parties.
And under discussion, I'm sorry?
Discussion?
Child abuse multidisciplinary intervention account, the Oregon Department of Justice is at the top of the agreement.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jake, US Department of Justice? Jake?
Oh. That's a grant that Ann and myself and Christie Albertson from the hospital came before the board last winter, and sought permission to apply for the grant, and we were awarded the grant. So, it's just signatures needed to accept that. Both Ann and I are working on the webinar that's required, and we'll have that wrapped up over the next week, too.
You want to state the amount?
Four hundred thousand dollars for three years. And then, there's a 10% admin cost that will remain, will be split between Lake County and the hospital. Brands work on the grant.
So, Mr. Bailey, you see any problems with accepting $400,000?
I hadn't seen this recently. I think I saw it near the beginning of the process, but I don't know, it might wait a little while so I can, I can go.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the agreement on the grant between Lake County and US Department of Justice, correct? I'm not seeing the number here or anything, Jake, but that covers it appropriately?
It's $400,000.
We're going to put that on the front of it. $400,000.
Over three years, yeah.
Over three years.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the grant agreement between Lake County and Community Justice and the US Department of Justice in the amount of $400,000 over a three-year period of time. Any other discussion?
As these things come forward, Jake has been very good working with other entities, other departments, and this is one, several different grants have come forward. Thank you for being proactive, looking for these, Jake, and working with, in this case, Christie. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Copier lease recommendation Denise presented this yesterday. She's not with us today. Essentially, it replaces the copier, we're going with a different company under this agreement, and it's replacing the copier and the assessor's office, as well as the clerk's office. The savings under this 60-month term of lease will be approximately $100 a month, overwhelmingly your paying. Cannon is going to also pay for the remaining lease payment as part of this, and Denise has all of her research indicated this was the way to go, so.
Well, just another example of looking for efficiencies, and not only efficiencies, beginning the service along with efficiencies. So, I'll move to approve the agreement between Lake County and Cannon, is it Cannon?
Yeah.
Camming, Droning, Advance, or is it just Cannon?
I'm just looking at it as Cannon, but.
Okay. A motion would be between Lake County and Cannon.
And I will second that. It's been moved and segmented to accept the new agreement between Lake County and Cannon for a 60-month term of lease for the two copiers in the clerk's and assessor's office. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The vehicle request, I don't know if Charlotte was going to be here, that was presented yesterday by Denise. Charlotte was present.
I think it pretty well went over yesterday.
Yeah.
This vehicle will be purchased out of the new funds that have come through the Veterans Service Department. There's no impact to general fund on this vehicle, so I'll move to approve the RFQ for quotes with Hall Motors, and the price being $34,925.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the vehicle RFQ from Hall Motors, company at $34,925. This will be coming out of funds that Charlotte's received.
Grant funds.
Grant funds from the Veterans Program, and he, or Denise did, you have two other quotes from Lithia, as well as Power, and Ashland, and Lithia and Climbuth Falls. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Transit request, proposals, recommendation, Denise said that that was yesterday with the new funds she got. Lake County Public Transit just recently received an additional $50,000, and through the distribution process that they follow, because this is an addition, an add-on to an existing contract, she's recommended the Dinner Court family receive $12,000, it's $12,768 after the match. Lake County Senior Center Association, $38,000, and that's $34,007 after the match. Very great funds for those two entities to have to provide this public transit service.
Yeah, this went through the RFQ process. I didn't catch this yesterday. I might go ahead and print this, but those two numbers.
Don't add up.
Reflect separately. One goes down, senior citizen after matches, $34,97, Dinner Court family after matches, $12,768, and then up. Have a question there, the total amount is still $50,000, correct? Was that a motion you made?
Yes.
I'll second that motion, and if that scribner, if that is a scribner, there, is that corrected?
That's a good catch. I think that is a scribner. It's been moved and segmented to approve the SDF RFQ recommendation in the amount of $50,000 split, as told or said. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll just go over the central Oregon COPISSU strategy initiative. Actually, if you want, I can wait on that. Okay? We have some folks there waiting. Dave, you want to go through your stuff?
Sure.
Okay.
I do have those today. Let's talk about the local review board rule number six on the bid. Jim's here. Mr. Bailey, what do you want to call?
Colonel Bailey.
Colonel.
Okay.
So, I recommend that we move forward on our bridge repair for our Regional Solutions grant for the bill.
Yep. Very small numbers.
Yes.
Or large numbers are very small.
Yeah. So, anyway, we need to get moving on that, get those bridges repaired, because we are on a timeline. I talked with Jim about what we needed to do as far as being able to just get this bid going so we can get the budget down, because we are on a very tight crunch. So, just questions for Jim on the emergency.
Well, I'm going to give a little bit more overview. The total cost is $268,346, the match from the person that, the company that has put in the quote is matching that with in-kind labor and other. We're very fortunate to have received a $165,000 grant from Regional Solutions with this grant and with this quote. We're able to take some bridges that are in existing condition to a higher level, and we're basically crisis management or an emergency situation. They'll keep the railroad continuing to run, because some of these bridges are by classification, not able to be gone over without almost a daily inspection or a routine inspection as a train goes over. So, this will be.
Actually, what they're, just to hit on that, they're driving in front of the train, every time they run down, and make sure, you know, they got a high rail in front of it inspecting them as they go along each track, so.
So, the question, and Dave's already talked to you about this before the board, Jim, is for us to be, through our contact review board, under emergency, we should be able to accept this and get this on the ground right away?
Yes, absolutely. It's Rule Six. You can go forward. The board's decision to prepare an emergency is above being questioned, and frankly, we've documented the existence of an emergency or a crisis situation for, well, end of this month, a year, at very least. So, now, we're finally getting it addressed directly instead of piecemeal, so.
Okay. So, I will make a motion under, first, I'd like to declare that there's an emergency exist for the operations of the railroad based on the condition of the bridges. With that declaration, I would like to make a motion under Rule Six to accept this quote from Goose Lake Railway. Total cost to the county through the grant program will be $164,643. I cover it under Rule Six.
Yes, sir.
What was that? 164?
And I will second that. And it's been moved and segmented to approve under Rule Six, this contract agreement, and let the record reflect what, how Commissioner Leonard's put it with the amounts and everything else. Any other discussion? I think it's tremendous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make it happen, Nick.
Dave, before you go on, the Paisley Airport Amendment, and the number change, did we deal with that yesterday, or do you mean?
No, we didn't do no action on it.
Okay. You want to do that one next?
Sure.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
I don't have it from, well, it's on the desk.
Well.
Mr. Shamsel appears from yesterday. I think he did.
Oh, that's right, I did.
Yes. I'm always covering my accent.
So, what this was, is we've already had, the lease is already in place, under their new, I don't have it covered, under their new regulations of codes and laws, they changed, they just changed the lease number to a different number, so, and that which is?
The number is 57-04H1.
Yeah, okay, that's what it changed to, and I don't have the one that was before, because I don't have that.
Okay.
Anyway, it's just a, it's just a lease number, it's only in there, I mean.
So, Mr. Bailey, that, we had a lot of discussion or enough discussion to note, but that's all it was, and did you see anything?
Right, no, this is, we've been operating on this lease before. This is not a substantive change, so.
Okay.
Move to approve lease with a new number, as the number being 57-04H1.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve, we presented Paisley Airport Amendment to change the number to the lease agreement. The discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Whichever of the two you wanted to debate.
Let's go ahead and do the school district commercial lease, same lease that's been in place when it was COIC. And what we did is changed, changed, whatever you want to call it, COIC, their program went to the school district, so they still wanted to occupy the building at 1240 South End Street Eight, and the only thing that we did put in the commercial leases we talked about yesterday was require them to do quarterly reports or updates to the county.
Okay.
One question, in trade for the rent, are there to do maintenance around?
Maintenance. And then, they also do other workforce, too, like they'll do in-kind workforce of scale, like that's part of what, if they can't get to that, then they'll go up there and do tent sites or whatever.
It's been a very positive thing.
Yes, it's been, since, for nine years, it's been very positive to the county, and they've.
I don't know about this for three years, but.
The last five, I think.
Copy. But it's been a very good deal for us. They've been great for us, and there's a few things we've had, you know, the normal, normal stuff, but they've been beyond.
The first two years was named the boss?
First four years.
Yeah. You were the boss the first four years.
A little sketchy.
I just think you guys hired me.
I'll move to approve the commercial lease agreement between Lake County and Lake County School District Number Seven, with encouragement for them to give us quarterly updates to the full board of commissioners.
Yes, I second that, and it's been moved and segmented to a commercial lease agreement between Lake County and Lake County School District Number Seven. Under discussion, I totally agree with Commissioner, which I think is, it's helpful for them to be able to, you know, because we do have it reported on and recorded, for them to get that information out to the public, because not everybody knows what great works go on there. not everybody knows what great work's going on there, so.
I'm going to ask, if legal counsel reviewed it, I believe he is supposed to be fully on top and aware of all our contractual agreements, that seems bigger building than that goes for the county in every way.
I review them every Saturday morning.
And then, do we go?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, the wind bid is, I thought we get on a little bit yesterday, we wanted legal counsel here on some of the changes that we, on that, on the contract to sell to Lake Readynecks of the 3.44 acres.
This is, this is a legal question, should be on legal updates basis, because a letter went to Mr. Bailey, but it's through the, you managing and through the sale of the property. I've emailed Mr. Bailey with some of my responses to the, my thoughts, that their legal counsel given to us. And I need state of public meeting, but on paragraph six, the limitations on use, I believe it still needs to stay in there. But we had missed, from what the discussion I remember, is that it needs to be that it will follow federal, state, and local laws. It says that it only will follow the state and general law laws. That is what, the order generally stated earlier.
That, that's one of the main points I know I made during the, it's the federal side of the states, but. And then county ordinance?
Well, county ordinance is what we were focused on. But as we had one this, to transfer to a third party and then use contrary to the county ordinances. And so, what we inserted is a real operative section in section six, in the second sentence, which says that they will insert it in the sale that they make to subsequent party. So their point about it being redundant, that's true, it is redundant. Everybody does have to follow those laws, but this was an emphasis, a point of emphasis on our part. And in fact, it's redundant, doesn't change anything, it doesn't increase their burden, so it doesn't need to be taken out. The point is, yeah, they're correct, it is redundant, but it doesn't make it more burdensome to them, so, you know, we have an interest in leaving it in, so my.
Well, and as you're describing on, Mr. Bailey, I guess I feel more comfortable in the county ordinance, we all know, through a lot of people can be changed, but it's changed, then it's changed.
Correct.
And the uses on lands can be changed. And so, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
And so I, I think that we have consensus for it to stay in there and for you to respond on that. The other question that was brought up was title insurance and so on. And I overchecked that I stated the gesture, I believe in the motion is inclusive that they are responsible for all the costs associated with getting the deed, title search, and all that stuff. And that's, that's not unique to this, that's almost on every piece of land that we sell. We put that responsibility on buyer.
Right.
And if they don't want to accept these things, then they don't accept it. That's where I am at, is there was nothing that we did in ring forward, and if it wasn't in the motion that was brought one-on-one, as I met with one of the other coaches, that you're responsible for all costs associated with doing this project, you, the title insurance, all that, so that's where I'm at, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're free to impose those restrictions, conditions on sale. The objections that they list here are all objections that, well, we kind of like it to make it different, but we don't have to. It's kind of, we're in the position of, you came to us to purchase this, these are the terms. Do you want to buy it or not?
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. I think we're all, Chair, are we all on the same page?
We're all on the same page.
Okay.
Okay. Dave, did you have anything else?
No, I didn't do that.
So we're going to bounce down to the addition today, Sheriff's Sergeant request. We had quite a bit of discussion on that yesterday. Paul is here. Morning, Paul.
Good morning.
We probably should get Jay in here too. Yeah, wouldn't you? Yeah. Dave, what's your run grab? Jay.
Thank you, Dave.
I don't know if you guys saw it, but I sent you an email this morning. I know it's very, very late notice, and I apologize for not getting it two weeks sooner.
Well, Paul, I have seen it, I have not read it.
I will say, it's no one's fault, Denise is very effective at her job, because I made the request on Monday and didn't realize that I was going to be on yesterday. So I didn't have a chance to put this information together.
Oh, okay.
In short notice. I asked her to put us on the agenda, I didn't realize that it was going to be yesterday.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. And so I tried to get what information I could put together this morning and get it to you as soon as possible. One is to definitely address the numbers that we talked about yesterday, just to put them actually in front of you. So Jay provided them for me this morning, and I attached them to the email that I sent. I, I know you guys got a short notice, and I don't want to sit here and read it in front of you, but basically, it kind of gives how we're, how we got to the position that we're in today. So we started down the road of creating some promotional opportunities and some management positions a number of years ago. And for a number of different reasons, we didn't get there until in 2016. And now we've had an opportunity to see those and evaluate that for about an 18-month time period. And what we determined is, we should have asked for one corporal and one sergeant instead of two corporals. We found that there was some limitations because of the unique contract that didn't allow the latitude flexibility that we had actually wanted and needed to fulfill what our outlook for the office was. And so we're trying to reevaluate that and restructure that a little bit to give a little bit better latitude. Sergeant's position would be an exempt position that could cover some of the extra shifts that are needed when you come with an overtime cost. It would also take some of the duties that I do on a day-to-day basis off my plate and allow me to dedicate my time in other places, including home with my family.
So my quick comment will be, I think from the outset, and specifically with the two corporal positions, but now it's rolled into one corporal, one sergeant, I've been on board. I mean, if that, if at the end of the day, but I have a couple of questions around that, if that will make this workable and be the way you really fully intended it to be from the beginning, then, then I'm on board with the change in position script, the structure. Dave, is Jake on?
I told him, he's on the phone, he goes, I'm busy, so.
Okay. Will you be able, because I know one of the things before is, because of the uniqueness of the union, those positions couldn't be mandated, the one work one shift and one work the other, are we going to have that split now?
Yeah, it will give availability to be.
Well, will it meet your needs to do that?
Yes.
And you can do it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It will be an assigned shift, but it will, I don't know how to explain it, because the schedule up there is so convoluted and complicated as it is. But, but that person will not bid for a shift, that person will be assigned a shift with the latitude to cover shifts as needed. So they may work a Saturday night, where right now, I don't have that. The way that it works right now is there's 11 biddable shifts, and they bid on those shifts according to seniority. What ended up happening is both my corporals ended up on the exact same shift, working on the exact same days, covering the same timeframe, it didn't help me at all. The sergeant's position will not get the opportunity to bid for a select shift like that. By default, that will separate those two positions, because wherever that corporal position bid is, I will assign the sergeant to be away from that to where it gives me that latitude range.
Well, and that's just something that I think, you know, just for the record, you might say we needed to know, because there's no point in trying to help you if we don't help you.
Absolutely, I couldn't hear any more. We thought we knew what we needed, and it turned out we didn't know what we needed, or the need changed because of the way that the bid was found.
So, fast reading this, and thank you for acknowledging that none of us were prepared for this this week. Thank you for putting this together. Thanks for addressing some of my questions in the bottom part of this I brought forward yesterday very much. I still have questions, Paul. I need to state, I'm supportive of the sergeant's position. I'm struggling with the structure side of it, and how everybody's got to where the wages are and the whole works. Under your job description, on what you just said, on the job description, it says Monday through five, Friday, covering shifts, unnecessary. And the county hasn't done a job description yet, but this is one that's written from the sheriff to us. And so, under your job description, it's almost opposite of what you just said. It's Christian twelve, I don't know if that's it.
I guess I don't have that.
The sheriff gave, when you guys talked this individually, emailed this to us, I just pulled down.
The only thing I can say to that is that we may not have been noticed about that being a structure by different Friday.
So, well, it's just, and I'm reviewing, we're having a working meetings and everything at the same time, so I can do it, but that one stuck out to me, but. Another thing that I understand that we want to make in your letter here, it says that this will save overtime, but we base the salary inclusive of overtime. So that, that's a fine line to say, and it's going to reduce overtime when we're prepaying overtime that we've been paying all along. See, what I'm, what I'm going to do is, is, it says that you're going to decrease your cost for overtime, but it's encompassed in this salary of this person.
The salary is not inclusive of overtime. The salary is based solely on the position, and that was the salary range that Jay Collins came up with. The inference I made yesterday was simply based on what their wages were last year to speak to the increase of what this salary would be to. It doesn't have anything to do with overtime.
I don't think.
Other than, it's a salary position that if he works an extra eight hours in a week, I don't have to pay an additional eight hours of time and a half. So I probably convoluted that and confused that yesterday when we talked about this, because I spoke to what the corporal's position made last year, but that really didn't have anything to do other than the increase in the salary amount to this salary that's recommended for sergeant.
Okay, so I must be not articulating or not understanding correctly what Jay used, and he's not here, was a corporal wages inclusive of overtime.
I was asked what the increase would be to the general fund liability of last year, and that's what they made last year.
With inclusive of overtime.
Inclusive of overtime, and so.
So we're going higher than that, inclusive of overtime, to another amount. And we're saying we're going to reduce overtime, but it's already captured in the salary of this person for the year. It's based on the year's amount of overtime, inclusive of the year's amount of overtime for those positions. Yeah? And so, I'm struggling.
Well, I'm here, I heard that yesterday too, but what I'm hearing Paul say today, maybe, and that's why Jay was in here, is that you went to Jay, and for a sergeant's position, this was the base pay that he gave you, I don't know what step, but in a salary.
This is the salary range that, when he did his study with other counties, this is what they, this is what was in the range.
And was this on the high end, low end, or middle point?
I can't answer to that.
That's why it'd be good if he was here.
Well, I, I think what we, and I'll try to not get hung up on overtime. What we probably need is an accurate salary, it's going to be the same as we've done for our department bids. And this is what I would say, a mid-management position. And we have the salary ranges for all of our upper management positions, and I'm just curious of the comparison of what our other higher management positions and the steps came out. And that, we, we had an actual salary study, I don't know, I talked to Jay something on this morning, I have other things on my plate besides this. I need to ask him. We need an absolute accurate salary study for me. I, I'm supportive of the position, but I'm struggling with, with going right back to fully loaded, inclusive overtime to set the wage for a position. I'm struggling with that some, Paul. And maybe that's my own personal struggle, maybe Commissioner Shown doesn't have that struggle, but.
Well, I'm, maybe I misinterpreted what you asked yesterday, because I thought that definitively you wanted to know what the difference in cost would be versus what we were proposing versus what it's currently costing us, and so that's the numbers that I provided.
Well, what I proposed, maybe I, I talked about this, talked about so much, maybe it wasn't, maybe it's individual, but my thought was to take all of your crescent officers, average it out for a year. I had that discussion, I think. And then, that is what your average cost is, and then go from there. We've taken, Jay apparently has taken the two highest paid and averaged that out, inclusive of overtime, and adjusted up from there.
Now, he just simply showed what the cost of those two employees are or was.
Based, and it's not employees, it's the position.
There is. Absolutely, because that's the only people that are eligible to even apply to this position.
So my comment on it would be just a little bit different. We did a sergeant in a patrol site, and so Jay did an analysis on salaries, and I think that's all we need, for me, that's what we need to see. I don't, I'm not going to specifically talk about the current two corporals and overtime and pay. I'm going to look at the position. I think Commissioner Winters has some, some real merit in his discussion about a mid-management position versus our upper management, you know, and Jay will tell us that. So that, you know, there's a true analysis of where a sergeant position in a jail should be at, what that is. And, and I think I will be, at that point, fine with that, because we have to, you know, we went down this road of trying to adjust salaries appropriately through studies and discussions. So if we agree that there should be a sergeant position up there in lieu of one of the corporal, then we have to agree on where that, because we don't set that salary, it comes back from Jay through an analysis. And then, then we're there.
I, I guess, I still have a struggle, Paul, is, is work for a long time to get our managers past steps, one through five. We're looking at starting a position, no steps, this is what you make. And in two years, whether you come in and say, boy, the sergeant is really working good, I have no place to move him. There is no structure of steps set up, no structure, anything set up for you to have the management tools to keep your employees happy, our employees happy. I'm struggling with that. I'm struggling with just setting salary, this is what it is, and going right back to the old days of, okay, your management, all you're going to do is cost a living increase. I, I'm struggling with, with the whole part of it, is maybe this number here is the top, and you start amount at top. And they know that. But if there's one through five, and we take, we take a corporal's position at five percent of it, and that's step one, and you can get up to step five, and it's this amount, and we set that. And you, and the sheriff say, we're going to have a sergeant, we're going to start amount at step five, I would be okay with that, because they would know that upfront. But I think we're opening ourselves up to you having a struggle in the future of no way to give any. way to give anybody advancement for doing no good job. I think we're, I think our information is incomplete, and it sounds like I'm trying to not do this. I want to do it, and I want to do it correctly, is where I'm at. And I want you, the sheriffs, to have the tools to be able to do that and manage your people.
So, Paul, before you comment, Commissioner Winters, you're making an excellent point, something I didn't ask, and that's why I'm glad Jay's here. That is, we're getting in trouble, and we assume that all this is, you know, sergeant discussions, and they're getting together this quickly on trying to sort this out. I totally agree with you. The job has to be aligned together, we want to have steps, we went that, we went that direction. So, my unfortunate assumption is that this was with steps. Jay, you want to add anything to that?
Well, we've already made the mistake with the sergeant position and the deputy site, it's not set up with steps.
And maybe that works for mid-management level, I don't know.
So, I guess, I want to clarify this with this. I can't speak for certain that a sergeant should or shouldn't have steps, but in the event that we choose to elevate someone or offer them up something due to merit, we can do a title change, because then we're adding more duties, we're offering up another, so then if we went from a sergeant to a lieutenant, that is essentially the same thing that we're doing, we're not moving somebody to a lieutenant to start with. We're going from a sergeant, and then if we get exceptional work and we want to add more duties, then we can change the title and add more to that as opposed to sergeant. Now, in some areas, sergeants are still part of the union, but that is not what we want. That's why we're readdressing it from the corporal side to where there isn't that step union process in place. So, I guess there's two ways to get there. I mean, we could look at creating steps for a sergeant's position, or we could look at reevaluating their duties and assignments and give them a different title in the future.
Well, within our department heads, we have those steps now.
But sergeant's not going to be-
Well, I know, we're talking about something different, but that's-
But still an exempt employee, that doesn't have union steps, it doesn't have any other way, unless it's done the way you're talking, Paul, is that your plan is to have a lieutenant later on and move them up until lieutenant's position. If that's the case, we need to set the salary range for a lieutenant, we need to set the salary for sergeant as well. That gives a feeling of growth, of wanting to sergeant and have a lieutenant be perfectly honest for a few reasons. That's where my mind goes, very straightforward, sugar on most of it. If that's the intent, is to create a sergeant position and for advancement, you're going to move to a lieutenant's position, we need to think of that also, we need that proposal to be that way, because steps is not the right way, and it's going to be position advancement possibility, we probably should have that discussion too, if that's the question.
Well, I guess I'm speaking to past practices, because I started out sergeant, then moved to lieutenant, and to under sheriff, and so that kind of demonstrates how that progresses. At the end of the day, I have a plate that's overflowing, and so the idea would be to keep piling stuff on the sergeant's plate to balance that out, and at some point, the duties are going to be in excess of what we would expect out of sergeant, and it would be what we would expect out of lieutenant. And we're not asking to create additional positions, because I can't speak to that, I don't know that we have someone that can do those jobs or not, but ultimately, that would be the goal of this mission, is to have somebody that can take on those jail commander duties to help offset some of the responsibilities that I have on my plate. I don't know if that clarifies anything or not.
I think it might have been.
I support the sergeant position.
I, go ahead.
No, I just think there's some more work than this, I don't think we can today agree on where we're at with that. I mean, the whole new discussion about a lieutenant position that you brought up today, and I understand that, Paul, I understand your background and all that, and then, as we created your position, but didn't, in doing something, removed any of your duties, I think we just need to go back and kind of figure all that out.
I guess the other thing I would add is, this wouldn't go sergeant to lieutenant, I mean, this would be years in the making, this would be something that would happen sergeant today, and six months from now, we're looking at adding a lieutenant. But ultimately, what it comes down to is, in the law enforcement world, titles have bearing on the cooperation you get from other agencies, and I think we had this discussion once before, where you have a large agency like Multnomah County, where they've got, you know, nine different steps of rank, and sergeant is a very low-level management position in Multnomah County, and you've got a chief deputy up here, and then you've got, you know, well, you've got undersheriff, chief deputy, lieutenant, sergeants, corporals, and so you have this big long list. And so, when that person is acting in a more of a command role, they don't get the participation and the cooperation from the larger agencies, because they hear the word sergeant, and they immediately think, well, this is a very low-level management person, when in all reality, I was an acting jail commander at sergeant's position in Lake County, and so that was some of the reasons for the initial change to lieutenant, was to get a little bit more cooperation from some of the larger agencies.
Well, just as a side question to that comment, just out of curiosity, because I don't pretend to understand that world, and I don't. I know, I don't, I understand your comparison between Lake and Multnomah County in theory, but there is no comparison relative to the size of the county. But how do we compare to other counties, similar in population, some being bigger in land base, some being smaller, such as Harney and Grant?
Comparable. Actually, it's becoming quite a trend across Oregon of the undersheriff assuming a dual role over both. There's actually three counties that just went that direction here in the last two years, and I'm not so sure that Harney's not following that. They've got two mid-level supervisors in their corrections, they've got a patrol supervisor, I don't know what his actual title, I don't know if it's sergeant, lieutenant, undersheriff, what it is, but he actually oversees both sides, because I just, three weeks ago, I went up and did Harney County's Oregon State Sheriff Association jail inspection, and I communicated with all of them, including Sheriff Ward. I don't know about Grant.
Well, do you think it'd be fair if we looked at, once again, similar counties? Just, I'm trying to get educated in this, wait, 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 hear my question. Would it be something we could relatively easily assume, that, you know, Harney County's four thousand square miles bigger than Lake County, Grant County's a similar size, smaller, all three are about the same population, that we have similar needs for our services within those, within the respective three counties?
I think that's fair to say, but I also would like to add this to that. There is one county called Lake County, and it has its uniqueness, and then there's Harney County that has its uniqueness, and then there's Grant County, and I think Commissioner Winters says it best, is if you've been to one county, you've been to one county.
Ben Boswell said that, we say it, we repeat that.
But regardless, every comparison that we've ever done is not apples to apples, because it's not possible.
No.
Because they have a different insurance plan, they have a different coverage plan, they have, there's always differences. And so, if we call up there and say, how much do you pay your guys? And they say, ten dollars an hour, and we say, okay, we're paying ten dollars an hour, we're same as they are, we're doing good. But in all reality, we may offer a different benefit package that's better or worse than what the other counties have.
Well, and just for the sake of today, and I appreciate where you're going, that wasn't, that really wasn't what I was trying to say.
No, but-
I'm just saying, as far as what the needs are in the county, not the cost, not the comparisons that way, just for my own reference, my own reference, that, you know, with that kind of population, they have a similar amount of crime and needs for deputies and jails and so forth. If that's a fair, if that's a fair statement, knowing that we have, because we are each individual county's differences in our land base and our population centers, et cetera, et cetera, that's a given, that we are different.
So, the only other thing I would add, to show you a little bit of the uniqueness between Lake, Lake and Harney, and I didn't know this until I went into their jail inspection, but their dispatch center is actually located in the same coexisting building as their jail. And so, they only have five corrections officers that work for Harney County, and then they have five dispatchers that work for Harney County. And that's actually how they're addressing their two-staff, twenty-four-hours-a-day requirement by the state of Oregon, that's how they're doing it. Now, as a best practices, absolutely, I would never recommend that to any county to do that. They're getting by doing that. But just to show you, there's some uniqueness there, because their supervisor is supervising five people. That is not the instance up here. I, I just want to get that out to show that even if Harney County was exactly the same size, I mean, exactly everything else, there's uniquenesses like that that play into a factor.
And I apologize for heading this in a little different direction, we'll, for now, we'll interrupt that, I just wanted to ask that question, go back to the position.
It seems like we're in agreement that there needs to be a sergeant's position, we support that. My theory on having steps, I very much believe that. Paul brought new information that maybe the process they would like to work would be, instead of steps, would be through a position growth, scope from sergeant to lieutenant. I'm trying to digest that right now, Paul, in the right way. I think we just don't have the full amount of information. I think if it would make you and the sheriff feel better, I'm comfortable with going ahead and accepting a sergeant's position contingent upon the numbers coming to us, and it's agreeable on the job description and the salary range, which is going to be lieutenant, sergeant to lieutenant, or twenty steps. All I'm trying to do is make sure that you guys have the tools, that you're not back before the board of commissioners, you're not back here, have them set here, and plead your case one more time for what you need for your operations. And if we set this up the right way, and if we even look back on your patrol side of the way that we've done that, and you see if we need to look at that, we may or may not, and get this set up the right way, so then you're out taking care of the bad guys, not sitting in front of us here. If we set it up for success, that's where I'm trying to get. So, my question sort of is, I'm willing to make that motion contingent upon these things, or would you rather have these things brought, and us make the motion, and then be implemented right away? What is the best for you right now?
I would be interested in either direction, I'm more than happy, I don't get, I don't have that information, I mean, I can go on my listserv, and I can send out to the jails and try to get this information, but Jay can go directly to the HRs and get this information.
You're touching on where all the, is, whenever we've done our other management positions, we hired somebody, a third party, to do it. That way, it's biased that it's done, that it's cost us a little bit, and I'm trying to be conservative, we did not do that, but it might be that important for this to be done right, Paul, that way, and it may come out completely opposite way I think it would or our thought, but then we have that third party says this is the salary range for the skills and everything. I think the job description needs some work to fit with, we need to go through our CIS and M, review and enhance our, whatever that job description with Jay, that part of it. So, I think there's things not quite there yet. So, I think it just needs more information before we pull the plug and offer the position.
I'm perfectly fine with that. So, with that said, and Jay's been patiently waiting, he's a guy, and we're trying to get here, I do want to hear a little bit from him, but I heard Commissioner Winters say, which is more than fine with me, we can make a motion today to eventually hire one of the corporal positions, change it to a sergeant, and to, and that would be working with Jay, that you guys come back and forth for the structure, that it would either be a sergeant and eventually a lieutenant, and here's the structure of pay for those two when that time comes, if that time comes, we'll assume that will, but for now, and a position description that really is what it needs to be, and then we'll figure out the other, the other part of that beyond today at that moment in time. And if that's acceptable, and Jay, did you want to say something right now, Jay? But I don't want this loss when we do this, and I'm not, I'm not sticking with any of these numbers, but the numbers that are in front of us, we are, because some of us are really, and I know you are, Paul, from an individual standpoint with the sheriff's department budgets, but as far as commissioners go, we are saying to ourselves, we're going to remove approximately, and we'll see what the figures end up at for these figures, ten thousand dollars of this year's and future year's ability to adjust for a revenue shortfall. I think for a lot of folks, that's lost, like, it's not, it's hypothetical, but we're staring at, and I know it's not lost with you, I could, I could see, you're clearly understanding that yesterday, but I just want that on the record, that if we have to, and I think we're going to have to, make a three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall, and we, as I said, we can't see any way that would be responsible by adding new fixed cost to an already known shortfall. So, we need to acknowledge that completely, but the importance of you having that structure and that ability to do the management you need, we so support, we'll just figure out that portion of it, that ten approximately, ten thousand somewhere else, but it's not going to come without a ton of pain to figure out how do we cut three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand out of this year's budget. So, that's all I have to say on there.
So, we have done independent outside salary studies for each of our exempt managers' positions. Is that what I hear you saying, you would like to do the same with these to the sergeant and lieutenant positions?
I'm not sure. Be very, but here's the new concept of lieutenant position.
All right. I'll be around.
I want them to have-
I think, Commissioner, I would suggest to Jay, that what we want is assure you, according to Paul, that what's proposed is what it should be, and how you can get that, I don't want to handcuff you in any of that. Yes, we're not going to talk about, I'm talking about handcuffs, sorry.
You're on a roll.
I don't want to hold you out.
Boy, now we're in here, Ed.
Is that workable?
Yep.
Is that workable?
Absolutely.
Commissioner?
The only other thing that I would, I would like to add, just to explain, the significant difference in what I proposed on the front end of this, where it was 5,000 to 10,000, just to use round numbers, from 4952 to 9750. One of our corporals is currently getting $2,200 a year in longevity pay that would go away with this position. So actually, the higher of the two earnings would actually be less money overall cost. I just, I just wanted to explain why there was such a huge variance in that.
You can see it when you look across the line.
The other thing that Jay and I discussed and talked about this morning, that this doesn't show. It does show the fully loaded cost of what these positions would cost, but it doesn't talk about what the bottom line is that's in that person's pocket. Because there would be an $1,800 difference in what they're paying for insurance than what they're currently paying in this. So although it shows that there's a $5,000 a year increase in wages, the bottom line that hits their pocket is 3,000. So I'm just, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
No, that's a good point, Paul. I'm caring about our employees and their benefits, and if they'll apply or not apply, that would be a decision in any. But what we're charged with, besides caring about it, is the bottom line to the cost of the county.
Oh, I, I get it. But, but at the same time, we can't design a position that actually they lose money to take a promotion. In, in my mind, that doesn't make any kind of business sense whatsoever of, how do you make this enticing to qualified applicants if we say, we're going to give you a promotion and we're going to take $10,000 a year away from you? And so I, I just, I'm just a footnote out there that, I mean, it's not that significant of an increase over what they made last year. So there has to be some sort of a carrot on that stick, if you will.
Yeah, and no doubt, over time, we've got lots of examples. If you see the scar on the, on the brow of the front of the bottom, you get some, that I hear.
That, that carrot you're talking about is what I'm worried about for the future. They don't have that carrot. I, I, for years, looked at our department heads, and all they ever get there is never a merit raise, a cost of living.
And when you're coming in before...
Absolutely. When you come before Board of Commissioners, the Conservative Board, that's one of the hardest things, is to get dollars out of the budget process for merit raises and everything. That's where I support the steps part of it, is to just set it up for success instead of struggles and hardships for the people. It's, in my opinion, right thing. Right? There's different things here, Paul, that I'm concerned about, that they're all workable. To get the other shortfall, the shortfall that's sort of predicted, your department and all departments have to prioritize prioritization. The employees number one on the priorities, prioritization side. In your case, I believe that's going to be quite a bit. So then it comes to materials and service side. So as we add the fixed costs, what really helps for me is for Board Commissioners to determine how to offset that in the future. I believe, knowing your budget the way I did do on the jail side, I believe there's some, on the, on the employee side, on the salary side, I believe there's some costs there that can be put down for this next budget year myself, that it can help cover for this. But you, as the person bringing the budgets to us, who have this shortfall, you're going to have to prioritize employees, materials and services. And that's something that I've worked face with, the potential shortfall. And I like to, I like to hear also is, is I'm going to add these fixed costs, but I'm also going to be, over here, I'm going to be reducing this. And it's not what I want to do, but I'm able to do that, because this is priority to me. This is what I need for my operations. So just a little bit of advice from Brad.
Absolutely. And I mean, one of those, right off the hip, that is not reflected in this chart, is that it, and we talk about it every single year at budget time, is this pre-banked holiday and time bank day over here that has a dollar number associated with it for every employee, because those are a part of the union contract that I don't have any deviation from. And so there is a dollar amount budgeted for each one of these corporals. We get 12 holidays and get six time bank days, or we pay them. So there's 18 days that has a dollar figure associated with it. So if we figure out whatever this hourly wage is, times 18 days, there's an immediate $3,000 or $4,000 savings just by simply moving this person out of that contractual agreement that may almost offset the entire cost of this, but...
Well, I see us, I see us after, yeah, I see us after the first year having some real good county-wide discussions on budgets going forward, because we want a lot clearer view of revenue available from department needs and stuff. Commissioner, are you ready to do anything? Not, not for the...
I, I'm, I think there's some great discussions today, we were setting for work session, but the discussions needed to be had. Paul says that either way is fine with him. I would like to show our, our words memorialized.
Yeah.
That I support the sergeant's position. So I'd like to make the motion to accept the creation of a sergeant's position contingent upon the numbers that Paul Hoggle, the sheriff, under Sheriff Hoggle, I'm sorry, and Jay brings back for approval.
And the, and the position description.
And the inclusive of, of position description. There's things, I'm, I'm not right, so, but I think there's things, if you read that, Paul, and read with Jay, that maybe that you saw a little bit of the main thing.
I'll second that. So the move, second to do exactly on the record of what Commissioner Winters just said. Any other discussion?
Great conversations, thank you.
Paul, is there? You still, I, you still want to visit?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a one, probably two conference call, and we'll catch up. And just give all of them.
And you have a little bit after too, meeting with Jim Walls.
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll work it out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Jay, Jay?
Paul.
Paul, is there anything left on the agenda?
Sorry, I didn't need to visit, but you have some time today also.
Well, committee minutes, but then I was going to talk about the central... Yes.
Just here. It's not on the record. Can we take a two-minute break?
Is, yeah, there is?
No.
You're kidding.
No.
We'll take a break for about five minutes.